There you go. It is, it is now 7:00 PM. Today is the 19th of January 2021. This is the regularly scheduled meeting for the Arundel Planning Board. We are meeting via Zoom. And as I said before, Susan is running a few minutes behind schedule. She will be joining us shortly. She sent me a message a couple of minutes ago saying she's about five minutes out. She had an important business phone call that she was on and she had just finished it. So we'll start with a roll call. We have Marty.
Yay.
James Lowery.
Yep.
Roger Moran.
Yep.
Susan just signed in. As soon as she gets her audio up. I'm Rich Gannon, the Planning Board Chair. And Susan needs to unmute herself. Okay.
Hi.
And Susan Roth is here. So we have five members. We have, we have a call. On the agenda tonight, we have the approval of the agenda. We have approval of minutes for January 5th. And January 12th. A public comment for anything that is not on the agenda. And then we have the land use ordinance. There are two amendment requests. One is a citizen request to delete the 1,000 foot setback requirement of a medical marijuana caregiver facility from a church and a daycare facility. Item number two is a citizen request to amend land use ordinance 9310 campgrounds to permit permanent and semi-permanent glamping facilities. And then we have item number three, discussion with action proposed revisions to the residential growth ordinance. And then if there's any time left after that busy hectic schedule, we will discuss other business with the town planner.
Motion to approve the agenda as written?
Yay.
Marty made a, Roger made a motion to move Marty seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor? Marty?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Minutes of January 5th. You need a motion to approve?
Were they sent out?
They were. They were part of the packet that was, that was sent out.
I didn't receive a package. That's why I'm asking.
Okay.
Hold on Marty.
Yeah, I think it was via email Marty.
To you. Marty, it's on its way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, let's table the, the approval of the minutes to the end of the meeting. So that everybody will have a chance to, to review them. Item number three is public comment. This is the point at which if you have comments about something that is not on the agenda, you can bring it to our attention. Susan, you have to unmute yourself. There you go. I can't, I can't hear you at all, Susan. Nothing there.
I didn't hear anything.
No, no, she's not getting, she's not getting through.
She is, I heard her.
I heard her.
Yeah, I got nothing from her.
Wobbly.
Marty, did you get my email?
I didn't check it. I'm wa, I'm waiting just a second. I don't want to double jam my, and then get kicked off.
Susan, can you send it in a chat?
Uh, I don't know. It's a lot of attachments.
I'll, I'll check it Susan, but thank you. Don't.
Sorry, Susan, I was talking to, to the other Susan in the meeting.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's quite okay. Let's see if she can get a chat out to us. And while she is working on that, are there, is, are there any actions in plans for Oak Ridge? We don't have anything in front of us yet. Oh. So at, at this point, the answer would be no. He's, he, there are discussions going on about connectivity in, in other places, but at this point, there are no, no plans in front of us for us to, to deal with.
We cannot hear Susan, but that would be under public comment.
Yes, that's exactly where it was. She, she sent the chat out asking that question because evidently her, her microphone is not working properly.
No talky?
No talky.
There she is.
Yeah, she, she's there, but I'm not hearing her at all. Yeah, Ted.
The only thing, I've had one discussion with Paul. That's Paul, wrong Paul. I've had one discussion with Walter. I think you were part of that discussion, Rich.
Right, the other day at, at the offices.
That's right. We were talking about connectivity. And the other issue is that I've had a request for drawdown, but I haven't gotten anything formal. Which will have, which will have contingencies waiting for dealing with landscape issues. We can't do anything about it now, but I've got money set aside for, for dealing with that later on. But I haven't heard anything back. I haven't gotten any more word from him. I sent him also a, a message on Thursday, last Thursday. Saying, I need that drawdown and we need to talk about it. So that's what I've got. So.
Okay.
That's the only communication. I haven't gotten anything back yet.
Anything else, Susan? Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any comment about things that are not on the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we will move on to the land use ordinance amendment request. The first request is a citizen request to delete the 1,000 foot setback requirement of a medical marijuana caregiver facility from a church and daycare facility. The applicant is Nioto Inoue of the Solar Center 25 Limerick Road, Tax Map 35, Lot 13, in the DB1 and DB2 districts. And I'm wondering if 749 is Mr. Inoue.
749 is me, Mr. Chair. It's Rick Light. Can you hear me okay?
I can. I see you're in two different places. I see your phone up and then I have a picture of you. Okay.
I use the phone for my, for my audio. Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is the applicant available?
I'm kind of surprised because we talked last week. He knew we were on the agenda.
Yep.
We discussed it. So I hope you didn't forget.
Well, he is not here. Oh, it is, it, he is asking us to make a change to the ordinance.
I think he needs to be here.
Well, I, I agree. I do think he needs to be here. So we're going to table this. Yeah, Marty.
Under this circumstance, under his request, can the request be made for an individual property or location instead of being throughout town?
I would say no. I, I don't think it's appropriate for us to make a change of this nature for one individual piece of property.
So would that be spot zoning instead? Classified?
It would fit into that category, yes.
And actually, we probably shouldn't even discuss this if he's not here. This is just literally shows up.
Thank you.
Well, I, I mean, I in some way disagree because this is a, I mean, it's a, it's not an applicant, application for a project. It's an application for a zone change. And I think ultimately, I think that gives us some, a little bit of leeway. Well, I think it's prudent not to take final action until we hear his pitch again. But if, if we've got some minor discussion, I, I don't know that that's an issue.
I, I'm not, I'm not sure if it, if it's an issue or not. I mean, I could.
Yeah.
Because you're right. I mean, it's just a discussion about a citizen proposal to change the ordinance. It's, it's not an application, which would obviously be incorrect for us to discuss.
But without this citizen being here, it's almost as if the proposal's not on the table. So why should we discuss it until it's actually a matter for discussion? Because we have other things on the agenda to address.
Susan, now Susan, I agree with you. In terms of expediting the meeting, I'm all, all in favor of moving along.
Well, I'm happy to discuss it when he's here. And we can discuss all of our, you know, queries and hesitations and whatever, but he's not here, so it's as if it's not even happening.
We will table this until such time as, as Mr. Nioto, Mr. Inoue is here.
Thank you.
I'm gonna email him.
Okay.
Okay.
Susan, can you turn your volume down a little bit?
Oh God, so sorry.
Okay. Item number two is a citizen request to amend the land use ordinance 9310 campgrounds to permit permanent and semi-permanent glamping facilities. The applicant is Bentley Warren of Bentley's Campground at 24 Bentley Way, Tax Map 30, Lot 24, in the DB2. And the applicant, well, it says, and the applicant 25 Limerick Road, Tax Map 35, Lot 13, in the DB1, DB2, and SP districts. Rick Light is the applicant's agent. So I see Mr. Light is here. I'm a little confused as to the references as to where the property is located.
Um, Mr. Chair, I believe the property is, is it Tax Map 30, Lot 24? Is that right Ted? I don't have it in front of me.
Yeah, that's, that's what it says on, on here.
Okay.
But then there was this, and the applicant, which is what had me confused. It, it, 25 Limerick Road.
Ultimately, Rich, this is, I mean, this is going to be a townwide ordinance. I mean, Bentley may have a property in mind.
Right.
But this is, I mean, this is, it's not, it's not solely for that parcel.
Correct, correct, to the chair.
Okay. It, it just, it had me confused because I know where his property is. But then it, then it appears that there is another applicant on Limerick Road. And now, maybe I'm just confused with the way that, the way I read it.
Could be a typo.
You're right. It's a, a, a townwide ordinance. And, and the question becomes, do we want to allow glamping in a campground? And, and since Mr. Light is here, I would ask him what he means by glamping.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd be happy to explain. Again, Rick Light, Light Environmental Design. And at this case, we are representing Bentley Warren. Andy Caskey is also here. I think you all know Andy, who's one of Bentley's representatives. But again, this is something we're looking at as a townwide ordinance change, hoping to get the support of staff and the planning board to move it forward as a formal ordinance change, not specifically to Bentley's campground, but to the ordinance itself. So what has happened, and I hopefully the staff, or the board has seen our January 5th summary and proposal, but essentially, you know, the camping world has changed. Can't say it's just because of COVID, but it's been evolving for, for a few times, many of you probably camp and know. And it's not simply RVs and tents anymore. Glamping is a very big thing, a very big business nationally and internationally. And it, what it is essentially is, is basically, and I'm sure most people have read about it or seen tidbits. It's basically camping with a little bit of luxury or comfort. So people are setting up tent platforms and camp, and just a whole different, it's a whole different market within the realm of camping, rather than sleeping on, I mean, I, I'm a backpacker. I sleep on, you know, on, on the tent floor and I'm happy with that. But some folks want a little bit more, but they still want to be outdoors. And then I think COVID, uh, you know, you read the news that COVID has sort of exacerbated that, where people want to get outdoors, but they, they want to have a bit of luxury. And they're not, you know, super hardcore campers, but it allows for a different type of camping and a little more upscale. So what you've seen around the country are small cabins, which we'll get into. It may be on blocks, you know, or, or whatnot. Tent platforms that are set up with mosquito netting and, and really comfortable, you know, in, in chairs and comfortable settings with maybe a small fridge or access to the, the, you know, the campground food, you know, sort of kitchen. And, and that sort of thing, as well as the traditional activities that you would associate with camping, horseshoes, swimming, other accessory structures that you'd expect to have with camping. So that's sort of a broad term of what glamping is. And so you still may have a community building as you would, it's like at Bentley's, you could have a So what we did is we sat down and gone through the ordinance together with Albert Frick and our team and, and looked at the ordinance and said, okay, what would have to change and what to, if the board and the town were just did moving, glamping into the realm of camp, camping. And we see it as basically some minor changes, some language changes, if, if, you know, the board were to support this. And then the campground ordinance is under the conditional use 93.10. Um, starting with the campground definition, which current, I'll, I'll read it from our memo. It currently reads, "Any premises established for overnight use for the purpose of temporary camping and for which a fee is charged." And we would suggest adding language that would be a little more inclusive, that might say something like, "Campgrounds may include, but not limited to tent sites, glamping sites, camping trailers, RV sites, park models, seasonal cabins and accessory related structures and appurtenances structures, also referred to as camping units." Something like that. So it clarifies all the different things that could happen within camping, with the campgrounds. Um, and then obviously, if we're talking small cabins, some of these may have kitchenettes, some may not, some may have plumbing, some may not, some, you know, some you may have very simple and go to use the restroom. But the idea of having one with a small kitchenette, it would be important to define these, this is sort of a Ted and Jim question. It would be important to define these sort of like the seasonal cottages, that they are not a dwelling unit. Therefore, they cannot be a full-time building. They cannot have year-round people living in them. And therefore you can't, you know, add kids to the school system and that sort of thing. So it might be important to add definitions under section three, adding the term seasonal cabin, if, you know, logically, to the term dwelling unit, that it, a dwelling unit does not include seasonal cabin. Um, and again, maybe adding the term glamping to definitions, a form of camping involving accommodations and facilities, more luxurious and comfortable than those associated with traditional camping, which may include tent platforms and seasonal cabins. And then the idea of a seasonal cabin, um, we came up with a definition, looking through other ordinances of something of the effect of a detached one-story, single-unit structure of a maximum of 600 square foot footprint, submitted as part of an overall campground made up of room or rooms, which may contain cooking, sleeping, bathing, and a sanitary facility. Occupancy shall be allowed from April 1st to October 30th. A seasonal cabin is not a dwelling unit as defined herein. And for reference in our memo, we included the definition of a structure to determine, yeah, this would still be a structure per se, but not a seasonal, not a year-round dwelling unit.
Considering that this would be used for habitable purposes for six months out of the year, it's going to have to be built to code. And it's going to have to pass the fire chief's inspection.
Understood, but that's why I think we're looking at the idea of a seasonal cabin as opposed to a full moveback, which is a state, the energy and building code structure, which would be a dwelling unit. And I think that these, go ahead, Chair, Mr. Chair.
No, I was just gonna say, under our ordinance, when, when you look at seasonal cottages, those are seasonal structures and they did have to meet moveback.
Correct, correct. We're talking about cabins, truly camping cabins, creating a whole new definition. And in many towns have done this, Bailey's Campground, you know, Scarborough, Saco, Old Orchard Beach, Casco. They have definitions that we referred to for seasonal cabins. And so it might help at this point, if I could do a share screen for a second. And if you'll bear with me.
To the chair before you go there.
Yeah, Marty.
First of all, are these on wheels?
These would not be on wheels. These would be on typically like a block foundation or something like that, you know, set on blocks.
Second, are these considered tiny houses?
We, I don't know the answer to that. I would say probably not because a tiny house is a dwelling unit, but we, we also, we were gonna chat with Jim and Ted about this, about, you know, crossing the threshold of what's a tiny house under the state definitions now? And would this be a tiny house? So my, my gut feeling, and I think it needs a little research, would be these wouldn't be tiny houses as defined as actual dwelling units. They would simply be, if you go up north and you've got a cabin, a seasonal cabin, it's uninsulated, that would be that sort of a thing. And so creating that sort of a, a structure and a definition that allows and makes it very clear it's not a dwelling unit. It can't be lived year-round.
Would these be only permitted in campgrounds?
Only permitted in camps unless the board chooses and the town chooses to allow them otherwise. So be part of a campground that has to be approved by the planning board with all the, all the other standards being met within the, the 9.3 ordinance and other parts of the ordinance.
In other words, it's a glorified room for rent.
Correct, exactly. Yeah, exactly. Mr. Chair, is it possible to, to allow me to share a screen?
I'm not sure how I, I can do that on this end. Let me.
Yeah.
It says, it, it says that you can do that.
Host disabled participant share screening.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Hang on.
So Ted, while he's doing this, can I ask a question? What, Marty, is that volume better?
No, that's just as loud.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, Rick, I've, I've turned on the ability to share.
Okay. Can people see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, here are a couple of photos we sent. I apologize. We sent a letter and then we sent this after the fact to Ted. I forgot to attach them. My apologies, but um, this is a, a couple of copies of cabins. I believe Andy, these are at Bailey's or somewhere locally. And there's
This, this cat in New Hampshire right now.
Hampshire, okay. And you can see they're very simple. They're stick-built. They're not insulated. Um, and they're, these particular ones are set on blocks or, or that sort of thing. So they would be considered a structure, I think, by your ordinance. But clearly don't meet the definition of a dwelling unit under the ordinance and under the state, state code. Um, and so these could have kitchens, they could have a bathroom, which these are intended to have, which should be connected to the, uh, the, excuse me, the campground plumbing system and septic system, et cetera.
What about heating? Wood stove or anything else?
These particular ones, go ahead, Andy.
Typically, they put a, a, something like a, a split, one of those split pack units on it where you could get heat and air conditioning.
Okay, so you're talking about, right?
A little heat pump.
Yeah, a little heat pump thing.
Okay. Um, you all, you all have that in your packets.
That's right, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so I'll stop here.
In your packet, you've seen that, well, Rick will probably put up the next picture, which I'll show the size of the unit.
Yeah. That was all I had. Those right there. What would you put? Does everybody have it in their packet?
Yeah.
Thing that I was looking at real quick and noticed is that there is no definition of camping in the ordinance. And I'm wondering
Are you?
If we were to pull a definition of camping that included the term glamping, if that would do, you know, help to encompass that into the, into what we already have as existing standards? For say a campground, you know, of, you know, an RV type of campground.
I think we do have those definitions. It might be under campground.
We had campground.
Yeah.
But not camping.
Correct. We noticed that as well.
Well, we have what? It's called seasonal campsite, an individual key scene, seasonal campsite. And we have campgrounds and that's all we have.
Right.
Um, Rick, what is the dimensions on these? Are they wider than a camper?
No, they're basically about eight feet, eight, nine feet wide. They could be moved on a trailer.
Were you thinking also of doing glamping, which is actually usually tenting, on platform tenting with other, with other amenities within there, big, you know, king-size beds and so forth? Were you thinking about those as well, Rick?
Yes, to the chair, yes. And I apologize. I tried to get copies. We had some websites we were looking at and I wasn't able to get them on share screen. I apologize. But I wanted to show you some copies, but there are some links. I think Sandy Pines locally, if you did a, a Google search to Sandy Pines, they have glamping. Uh, and you could just Google glamping and I apologize for not having the graphics, but basically they're platforms. Like if any of you have hiked your backpack on the AT or on, on the, on the white. So you have these camping platforms at some of the Liberty Springs at some of the campgrounds where you put your tent on. They're talking about the sort of things you might have had if you went to Boyer, Boyer Girl Scout Camp with a platform, maybe some sides and a tent sort of structure. And yeah, a bed. Maybe a dresser. Uh, you know, a couple of chairs, but it's just a little more comfy than just sitting on the ground in a lawn chair and have, and a campfire. And a lot of these would include, like they normally would, a fire pit as they do now with the yard sites. But just, and it sort of speaks to the same concept, but a little higher level of, of luxury.
Well, that's what Hidden Pond does too, correct?
Correct.
They, they actually have bigger units than this. They have like two bedroom cottages. Actually more like Joe's, Joe's got.
Yeah, I think Hidden Meadows, I, I think you're correct. Hidden Pond through the chair. I think those are more like what's up the street, the seasonal cottage in terms of their, their use.
But those are rentals. They're not, they're not occupied. They're not owned. And these, these would not be owned. These would be rented out by the campground, right?
Correct.
So Rick, what's the difference between this and a hotel, other than the fact that there's nobody there checking you in and the room's a little bit nicer and they're, and they're all together, but this looks like it's a ho, it's a glorified hotel room.
Well, I guess it, to the chair, I guess it's a good question, but I guess I would ask, what's the difference between this and an RV really? In terms of, you, an RV has all the same features. It's probably even more cushy. An RV unit's gonna have a, you know, it's gonna have the, the rooms, it's gonna have the facilities, it's gonna have a small kitchen. It's gonna be comfortable. And these are simply in place. to have a small kitchen, it's going to be comfortable. And these are simply in place or a park model unit, which we talked about in the past. The park model units are basically RVs with the, you know, in one place, again, with the axles, alluding to Marty's earlier question, with the axles being left on, so you could move them and maybe a skirt at the bottom, but not actually being moved. It's very similar to a, I got a park model, but they're stick-built, you know, in one place.
Are we going after the last Alaskan frontier, where they're building all the cabins out 20 miles away?
I don't, it would be, I think I would enjoy that, but I think this would be within the realm of belonging as part of a campground.
I know, but I'm being, how they're showing how they're all post and beam or stick-built that way. I mean, it was just how they're, I'm using that as a reference-only kind of scenario.
What amount of property, what amount of property are you allocating for each unit?
We have, it would be up to the board in the second page, page three of our memo, under the conditional use, I apologize for the dog in the background, the conditional use densities, we, there's a table, 9, 3, 10.1, campsite density by type. We suggested adding in where you have RV sites, adding in seasonal cabins and glamping sites at 11 per acre, non-shoreland and shoreline, seven per acre. So the same density as an RV site, because they're about the same size and you'd have the same amount of, you know, same basic facilities. You'd have a parking spot, a cabin or a tent platform, fire pit, picnic table.
No.
But that's, that's, I guess.
To answer your question about the difference between these cabins and an RV, I can drive the RV away. This cabin needs to be a permanent fixture.
Right, much as like a park unit, a park model, which is, can be driven away, but it's typically left in place.
Would there be maid service there, checking in and out?
I would assume that would be part of the camp, the campground provision, just to have, have the units cleaned. You pretty much would have to have that, correct, Andy?
Correct. That's what we do with the park models.
This is, this is, this is a lodging facility versus, versus personal ownership, so it is much different. Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I was hoping I could get something for Rick before the meeting, but, you know, Jim Nagel, I had a long talk with Jim about this, and I think, I think Rick might benefit from a discussion with him, because he was, he said, these are great, but the problem is, he believes under moveback that these would have to have a foundation and they would have to be conditioned. If you're going to condition, you have to meet moveback, which means that that jacks us up to a totally different animal than, than what we're, what's being proposed here. He said it would be like the seasonal cottages. They have to have insulation. If they're going to have heating and plumbing, they've got to have those, those particular elements in them. And that could change the, the whole, the whole dynamic of what you're looking for in terms of costs, because he basically says there is no such thing, as far as he's concerned, as a temporary structure of this nature, unless it's on wheels. And that's about it.
Through the chair, question?
I think it's, I'm.
Hang on, Marty.
So I think it would be, you know, I think this is intriguing, but I think the applicants need to square this way with Jim at some point to make sure that we're all headed down the same road. I know you asked for that, Rick, but I wanted to get this going, you know?
Yeah. No, I appreciate that, through the chair. We'd like to talk to Jim and you both about it. And I, and through the chair, and I don't mean to cut Marty off, I, we've had the same discussion of how this, and it's why we wanted to talk to Jim, how this would apply under moveback. And I understand the, you know, basically, in today's world, once you start doing anything with a building, you have to condition it, if it's going to be habitable, condition it to full, full moveback standards. And I understand that concept. But I also think that creatively, I think we need to hopefully look to this. Where other towns are doing this, there must be some provisions. And I couldn't speak specifically, I don't know it that well, within moveback or within the state statutes that allows for cabins that are not considered dwelling units. So I think, but I think you're right. We have to talk to Jim. I think it's mission one. If these had to be full conditioned space with full foundations, it, it, it wouldn't fit the mold. It wouldn't, I don't think it would work.
I don't think you have to look, you don't have to do, I asked him that. I said, wait a second. You're talking about full foundations? He said, they have to have protected foundations. So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be poured foundations, but you'd have to put your posts.
Okay, let me, let me get back to Marty's question.
Question on that, like a mobile home or anything else? Mobile home is one other critical thing, but what kind of security is there on a, even a block-built structure like that for heavy weight?
Through the chair, I, that's a very good question. We'd have to look into that with Jim Nagel and what the requirements would be. I can give you, for instance, even designing a greenhouse or working with, we just did a volunteer project in our community for a greenhouse at the local school. And even that had to meet, you know, the plexiglass, that had to meet wind load. So there's probably certain requirements that Jim would be, would be more educated on, is the buildings that have to meet. So if this goes forward, there has to be a definition that applies specific code standards. We'd certainly want to make sure that was on the up and up and in the ordinance or referred to. But that's a very good question.
I'm just throwing it out as for safety.
I think you and Jim and Tad getting together and having that conversation, because if Jim's going to tell you that it has to meet moveback, we're not going to argue with Jim.
Understood.
He's the, he's the guy that understands that, that process.
Rick or Andy, are yurts part of the plan?
Of course. I think they very well could be. And we could put that in the definition. There's no reason, if this is going to be town-wide, why exclude yurts or include them somewhere within the definition of glamping? That's a great point.
Does anybody? Chair, I see a question.
Yeah, Marty.
Could a bed and breakfast put one of those in?
Not if it's in the camping section, no.
I'm just thinking out of, out of, out of the realm, that's all.
Well, they, we would, we would have to include glamping in the section that defines bed and breakfasts and, and everything else. This, this right now is specific to the campground section, so it wouldn't impact anything other than campgrounds.
I'm just thinking of future reference.
Yeah, understandable.
But to Marty's point, if you had a parcel that, that would accommodate it, could you put a small campground in with a parcel that had a bed and breakfast?
I don't see why not.
And through the chair, I think it's, is it Tad, five acres minimum for campground? There's a, there's a minimum acreage for campground. So is that correct?
Yeah, you're correct. Yeah, there's a minimum acreage. What you would do is, I mean, if you wanted to do a glamping bed and breakfast, that's something, I mean, bed and breakfasts are limited to three units right now. So.
It's just a five.
That would have to be something we'd have to make an impact to the ordinance for.
A B and B is as close as I want to get to glamping anyway.
A B and B, they're at least supplying your food. Here, you're doing your own.
That's right.
Right. Through the chair, I guess a comment. One of the things that's interesting about this is that, and I appreciate the board taking this up, and there's really some good questions that we'll discuss with Jim. These are excellent questions. It's a market share too, that, that it's sort of keeping up with the Joneses, that the whole concept of camping, as I introduced, has changed. And so if other communities around you are allowing that, and around the list, and you're going to lose market share in terms of business. And so it sort of makes sense to keep up with the times. And we're just trying to make sure the ordinances can be worked to hopefully make this happen. But I guess first stop would be to sit down with Jim, as we're hoping to do, and kind of work, work through some of the details. Absolutely.
And if you, you get together with Jim, you get all of the details worked out, you decide to go on, where in the current plan that Bentley's has for expansion would these be going?
Don't know. I haven't, haven't even looked at it yet. Yep.
Probably in phase four, up in the next hill, wouldn't it be, Rick? That's where it's a little.
Probably, right. We're looking at phase three now, some minor stormwater changes, and we'll probably come to the board for a review of that this winter, just some tweaks. But prop, I would, Andy, I would probably guess, maybe the future phase out there in the field, phases five through seven or something?
Well, maybe. I think, I think most of what Bentley would want to do is to scatter them around the campground like he has his park models and maybe get rid of some of those park models and replace them with some of these seasonal cabins.
Now, would they be taxed on a regular park model basis per year round?
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, they'd be, they'd be taxed as permanent structures directly to Bentley's because he owns the property. Now, I have no idea what that would involve. I don't.
No, I'm just saying, like, Red Apple Campground had a year-round, our units that were left there a year out, and the beginning of April, they would be access or whatever else.
Yes, this would, this would, to answer your question, Marty, this would, this would be taxed in some manner. And they're, they would be structures. They would be structures and taxed accordingly.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none. Enjoy your discussion with Jim, Rick.
Thank you. We will do that. And I intend that we hopefully will be back in front of you to have a further discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Through the chair, I didn't mean to butt in. I'm sorry.
No, no, that's quite okay.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I, I sent an email and a text to Neil. I haven't heard back from you, so.
Okay. Well, at this point, the next item is a discussion with action, the proposed revisions to the residential growth ordinance. I'm not sure what, what the rest of you feel or how you feel about the various things that we've seen. I tend to think that we should go with, with the town attorney's recommendation and take out the, the point system. Even, even the, the opinion that we had from another attorney seems to indicate that there's never been a challenge, but if there is, it probably won't hold up. So I don't know how you guys feel about it, whether you want to take it out or whether you want to leave it in.
Through the chair.
I'm in favor of taking it out.
Okay. Yeah, Marty.
Question, can we suggest it and leave it up to the townspeople to take it in or out?
No, we would have to, we would have to take it, take it out and have, and have town meeting approve the ordinance. Or if town meeting wants to leave it in, they would just shoot the ordinance down.
I'm just thinking, that way, the town can't say that we're trying to undermine or whatever else, but by public vote, it would be, and even though it might be suggested by the attorney and possibly the selectman, but along the way, that it's left up to the townspeople.
Well, it's ultimately up to the townspeople anyway at the town meeting. We're, we're simply saying, we're, we want to follow what the, what the attorney is telling us because we don't want to have to go to court to fight with this. No. If, if the town says, no, we want to leave it in there, then we leave it in. But the only place to, to make that decision is at town meeting. We can't go to them with a, with a what if, you know, can we do this? Would that be okay? We have to give them something for them to vote on.
Now, this along the way, we'll have a public hearing and, you know, we'll solicit the comment. It just, you know, town meeting always can be a wild card.
Yeah.
Any thought on public hearing information?
Well, the public hearing would be, depending on, on how the rest of you feel, if, if it were, if it were me, the public hearing would be to remove that, that requirement from the ordinance. And then, then we have the public hearing come in and see what happens. And if we get, you know, if we, if we overwhelmingly get faced with the fact that, that the townsfolk at the public hearing say, no, we want to keep it in, even though the town attorney says we should take it out, we want to leave it in, then we just pull it and we don't put the ordinance on, on the warrant. We just pull it at that point.
Did you get any viewpoints from the selectmen?
I did not.
Through the chair?
We have one here.
Yeah.
Velma?
Yes.
Speak to us. Great words of wisdom.
I do agree that, that with the town attorney, if the town attorney suggests we take it out, then we have a public hearing on that. Because if the townspeople decide, no, they don't want to take it out, then it's a moot point.
Yep. Ted, you were going to say something?
Yeah, I was going to say that actually, for this to go forward, it's, the selectmen have to approve it as well. Because first of all, they set the, set the warrant, but more importantly also, that's, any amendments that are made to it, have got to receive both the selectmen and the planning board's approval before it goes to town meeting.
Right. And we would, that's true. And we would be sending it up.
Perhaps a workshop for the selectmen might be in order as a way, because we have, for, this is one issue. And then we have the second issue, which is what to do about multifamily and, and PUDs and that whole issue. And we should discuss that with the selectmen. Because right now, this ordinance will continue to prevent us from having multifamily and age-restricted housing in the future unless some changes or modifications are made to it.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, we can approach the selectmen and see about getting together and having a joint workshop to discuss it. Because, yeah, it's, that's one of those things, we have no idea. We remember the last time, we, we said, well, let's lower it down to 32, because we weren't getting any place close to 40. And that died a miserable death.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll reach out to Keith and see if he can discuss it with the selectmen and set something up.
Are we going to have any allocations for multifamily dwellings? Or are you going to just put it at 40 permits a year?
Well, that, that would be part of the discussion we can have with the selectmen about setting up multifamily dwellings or setting up age-restricted communities.
With multifamily, it's being investigated for multifamily right now.
Yeah. It'll, it'll give us one more item to discuss at the workshop. But basically, it'll, it'll all revolve around the growth ordinance.
Through the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
How do we do this if we're on Zoom and they're in meetings? Or do we do a Zoom meeting with the selectmen?
That's a good question.
Leave that for the manager and the, and the, the chair of the selectmen and the chair of the selectmen.
Yes.
I think that meeting room is quite big enough to do social distancing in our selectmen's meetings. We wear our masks. The room is set up for social distancing. We wear our masks. The room is set up for social distancing. We have masks there. We have hand sanitizer there. I think the room would accommodate both boards.
That that's quite possible, but I don't do public meetings at this point. My my wife is is in the high risk category and I'm not going to risk bringing anything home to her.
Fine too.
Yeah. Talk to Keith because it very well may be that we can do it that way. We may be able to have those of you who want to come, fine. If not, you can be on Zoom and and still hold a meeting. Oh, we could hold the entire meeting on Zoom.
Yep. Yeah, I'll I'll go in tomorrow and talk with him about that.
Okay.
And see what we can do. And then I, you guys meet next Monday?
Yes.
Yeah, so he can, he can check in with you and see how you want to work that out.
Or agenda.
Okay. Does anybody have any other business that they want to discuss?
Yeah.
Yeah, Marty.
Sightwalk coming up. Ted.
We have a sightwalk coming up?
No, we don't. Staff review does.
Oh, staff review, okay.
Yeah, we have two Thursday.
What you looking at?
Private ways. Looking at West Lane and Porcupine Lane. Porcupine Lane, West Lane is basically verifying that it's suitable for for an additional home. Actually, Rainy West's granddaughter is looking to build out a lot she received from from Rainy. And so we have to just verify that the road is officially verify the road is suitable for that additional load, which we're going to be doing on Thursday. And at Porcupine Lane, we have a very interesting situation where we have a we have a family division or a future family division, but they have to expand, extend the road. And they're building the extension to the current standard, but the the rest of the extension or the rest of the existing one is below the existing standard, but it can be it can, it can be used as an access to the extension. But it's also happens to be in the Duckbrook Watership. Yay.
Oh, hey.
Oh, yeah. So it's it's tricky, but the fellow who's doing that is sitting right here with us, Paul Green. And we're going to be going out, take a sightwalk and we're doing that application, making some decisions on that. So that's on Thursday.
Cool.
Yeah.
And from from the looks of it, we have one.
Full engineered.
Yeah, we have one application on the agenda for the next meeting. That stream either.
Right now, we have one. I I heard from the the Graskys today. And I'm asked to play, go go between between them and ACT right now. And they're very, they they're going to proceed with the eight lot one.
Okay.
And they're going to final design right now, so.
Yeah, but we 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 still don't have the the submission or the plan or anything else.
No, no, they're, they're, that was just a concept they had last time and now they're going to scrap, they're going to scrap the what you have in your packets and come up with a brand new application.
Okay.
Okay. I didn't receive that. Sorry?
Which parcel is that?
That's a Rumbles Keep.
Okay.
So we're looking at the sixteenth of February. As at the early.
Third. It's the third.
Yeah, yeah, this.
You're looking for a Rumbles Keep will probably be, they'll probably submit on the third and they'll be ready for the sixteenth.
Yeah.
And the other one is basically a shoreline zoning for a driveway off of Proctor Road through the through the shoreline zone.
Right.
I showed you that today. That application's solid. It's pretty well done.
Right, but we're seeing them on the second.
Yep, I'm sorry, the second. Yeah, we're seeing them on the second. The question is, what do you want to do on the agenda? I'll see if I can get some of those cluster development changes that you folks radically made last week. See if I can get those.
Yeah. If we can get a couple of those ready, we can proceed forward.
Okay. And probably, I don't know, it's up to the board, you know, if we hear from Neilto. He may have forgotten. I sent him an agenda, but he may have forgotten and he may want to come before us at that time. Is that, I'll talk to the chair about that, depending on what he says. Otherwise, things have suddenly slowed down on my, on my end. However, I have, I was inundated by about five different requests for meetings with people who want to do some development. And so there's a lot of stuff that's going to be coming up. It's just we're in that, we're in that trough in the waves right now.
Well, we can.
Don't get comfortable, in other words.
We can use it because it gives us time to work on the ordinance and the changes that we've been looking at.
Yeah. Well, there's going to be a lot of stuff coming, so.
Hopefully, hopefully, we'll we'll be able to work through it without having to schedule any more meetings, any extra meetings.
Oh, you don't want to do one more just to get, make sure we did four in January?
Yeah, no, right, okay, because if it's four in January, that means we're going to have four in a row plus February going. No, thanks.
Yeah, good point.
Okay. Let's look at the minutes from the last, from January fifth.
Through the chair, I have one amendment I need to make to it.
Okay.
And that would be, I forgot Paul Green in the the list of attendees. So I made that change.
Okay.
Sorry, Paul.
I don't even know if he's with us or not.
He's right down below. There he is. He's the guy waving.
I don't see him.
Yep, he's there.
He's there.
If I'm looking on 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 my screen, he's to the lower left of you, Marty, but he's in a different position on yours.
Okay.
While people are looking, I need you all to come in and sign a my alarm. Need you to sign Les Williams' my alarm and they want to record it. When you get a chance, stop by please.
Somebody just left and I can't tell who it was.
It's Velma.
Oh, okay. I'm looking around, going, wait a minute.
That's what happens with dead air.
And we don't, we don't have, we don't have the the minutes from the twelfth, by the way. They weren't in the packet.
No, couldn't get it done in time.
Which is fine.
These long weekends are killers.
To the chair, this is Sue. Can I ask you a question?
Hey, you got your mic working.
I changed my phone. I changed to my phone, so it works.
Okay.
Um, so I missed the last one because I forgot that you were moving to Tuesdays from Thursdays. Is the, are the minutes, they're not present, so they're not posted. So you changed a lot of things radically, he just said. When will they be posted for the town or for people to see it in consumption?
I was gonna say, they they're not ready. We made recommendations. We've got to sit down and fine tune so that we can start having public hearings on the issues.
Okay.
I will post Sue as soon as they're on the agenda again, which they're telling me they want for the for the second. So I guess I'll probably be trying to post those within, by the end of next week.
My second question was, is that the last what sightwalk, the invite, the sightwalk you did, Ted, you did at my house Thanksgiving and for across the street, and I called and emailed a couple of times and hadn't heard response from you in regard to the trees and things like that because the trees are, again, now they're frozen ground. At the time, it was fine. They were purchased and just laid on the side of the road. So I was curious, moving forward, what what is the best way to get communication from you? Because of phone call and emails, I don't seem to. When is the best way to do that?
Probably just the best thing is an email. I'm sorry, I didn't see your email. My mistake.
Okay, so emails are better than phone calls?
Yeah. I'm I'm still a lot of problems with my phone. I didn't call anybody out today. That was, that was great. It's a programming thing. If you if you don't come out of the email, well, you guys don't want to know, but apparently it's beyond my ability to understand that you have to put in a code every time you hang up from your, you're retrieving your emails. If you don't, it becomes busy and you can't call or you can't receive.
Gotcha. Okay, so email would be better for just, not for this question, but just for future reference if I have some.
Much better to do that. It's not, I'm not trying to talk to you, I'm just.
No, no, I'm truly just asking. I don't want to be a thing. I just want to know.
No, that's, that's, email's the best way. Okay, and if I can't call, then I will email you back. But in terms of, oh, yeah, those, 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 those trees. Those he's, he can't give him a C O on that until those trees, and I don't know what he's going to do because the ground's frozen. And I told him you have very, I I've had discussions with him and said, you have a very narrow window. You got to get a man. And he said, don't worry. And I said, I'm worried. So, A, it's his, it's his C O, you know? So.
Think your phone quit working again, Susan?
You're muted. Unmute yourself. Oh, no.
I don't think your high tech likes us.
No. I think you've got my phone. My work phone. Because you're muted. Can you unmute yourself or? Chair, you run this, you've got the.
No, it's.
You can't unmute her? You can't force unmute her?
No, she has to start.
That. There you go. Yay, woo, okay. I'm going to do my blackjack thing. I'm not going to touch the phone. Again, I'll just sit here quietly.
Yeah. So I I I will stay tuned.
Okay, thank you.
Same thing with Walter. Stay tuned. He asked for it, draw it down. I said, I'm going to keep a thirty thousand dollar contingency here. We've got more stuff to do. We've debated this back and forth and we're just going to have to say, I'm keeping the money until you do this.
I didn't mean to take over the meeting because you were talking about walks and that was the last walk and I just wanted to know the best way to communicate with you, so. And then the information, second, I I missed the meeting and it was my intention to come and I missed it, so I just want to make sure I have the information. You know, you know me.
It'll be posted tomorrow, assuming they approve it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so any discussion on the minutes of January fifth? Hearing none, we need a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of January sixth.
So.
Okay, motion by Roger, seconded by Susan. Any changes, any discussion, anything we need to do? Hearing none. All those in favor? Marty?
Aye.
Jamie?
I'm staying.
Susan?
Aye.
Roger?
Yes.
Four in favor, one abstention. Now we're on to other business from the town planner, if there's any.
I wrote it down and I left it at work. I don't really have much else, except the one thing that I did want to say is that ACT is, I'm going to be walking around those keep with several members from, with Leah, Jamie's wife, and and a member from ACT to take a look at the the open space. Basically, that Rumbles Keep is going, is thinking about conveying, and I've talked to the Graskys, who are the owners in Maryland. And they're willing to they're willing to part with that land, with that open space, because they don't feel the homeowners association is going to do much, so. And and enjoy that. So we're taking an assessment, walk on Thursday on that. Also, the other thing that I, we are doing tomorrow morning, we have we have called in a G I S outfit to look at how we can integrate our G I S system with our our tax maps. So and all that information can be online and add to the fingertips of citizens. So instead of it being difficult to access, to access, you actually will be able to point at a, at a parcel on the G I S and it will come up with information and have documents attached to it. It'll be very user friendly, much more useful for the citizens. Also, frankly speaking, for developers, for realtors, for bankers, and it provides a lot of instant information that is not currently available. So we're going to be discussing the hosting of this is actually rather inexpensive, relatively speaking to how these things go. So we're going to interview these guys tomorrow morning and see what they can do for us and how much upgrades we have to do. I know I have to upgrade, you know, up from my nine, ten, four in my G I S or G I S. But we have about, I don't know how many parcels, three years of parcels that have got to be integrated into the set. But I think it would be exciting because the board, as well as the citizens, could could use these, have these resources available to them. I've also ordered a soils map from our G I S consultant to put together so that we could start exploring more of what we were discussing at last, last month or last meeting, last week's meeting, sorry, about capacity based planning and capacity based density. So it's what Jamie was talking about as well. So we need the resource, we need to map it, get a general idea of the medium density. It's it's U S G S or the U S S E S, sorry, it's the S E S soil maps. But and their medium density, so the accuracy is sort of like, it's better than the National Wetland Inventory, but it's still questionable in some cases, but it gives us a good idea. It gives us enough information for planning purposes and will be a good tool. And if we go through this system and are able to put it online, plenty of where we'll be able to access this material as well as, you know, as well as staff and and the general public. So we're going to be improving our capabilities, hopefully.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Would that also help along with the river study and are they, would they join in on that for future references?
It all depends what data we put in, Marty. Incidentally, I have I've been in touch with D E P. I talked to D E P and gave them a list of information on farms they needed to know. Actually, EPA wanted to know inventory, all the farms, inventory and location of the farms in in Rundle. So the application for the next phase is starting to take shape and the E P is very interested. So they're the grant givers on this. And so they, they're getting serious about it. They asked me if I knew any farms that were polluting the water.
Or had been polluted.
Have been, yeah. You'll notice also that there's several, several farms up in central Maine that now have the same problem with F P O A.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we're going to find it's more and more in in our water and our food chain. So. So we're not the only town that's scrambling with this issue right now.
Okay.
Well, there, has there, through the chair, a question?
Yeah, Marty.
Has there been any resolving of of the soil composting place?
Soil composting?
No, it's still in court.
Oh, okay, that. Actually, we had, there's been another, another appeal issued to the Supreme Court. And it's basically, it's dealing with the D E P case, but we keep getting dragged in.
Yeah.
Because we're, we're allegedly in collusion with, with D E P. So that's being decided right now, and I just was reading the, what Leah had put together for, for a response. You know, we're, we're not being, it's a D E P case, but we're named in it, so we still have to, we still have interest in it and it's an amicus brief we have to do, so.
But it's nothing to do with the planning board?
No, although you were referenced, you were personally sued. That was referenced. But.
You referenced the fact.
Yeah. So but you know, it's just another case. This is the A D C case, you know, against D E P, and we haven't even gotten to the 80 K, our 80 K violation that we've, we've posted. And we're going on 10 years now, aren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're in 10 years. We're in the 10th year now. But this has gone on.
It's been going on for as long as I've been on the board.
As long as I've been here.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
Motion's been, motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. Thank you very much for your attendance. Just hoping you all have a good, have a good weekend. No, it's, actually have a good week.
Right.
We're closer to the week than we are the weekend. And we'll see you all in two weeks.
Thanks, Rich.
Take care.